Notice of a regular meeting of the City of Friendswood Planning and Zoning Commission to be held Thursday, August 8th, 2019, beginning at 7:00 PM in the council chambers at City Hall located at 910 South Friendswood Drive, Friendswood, Texas. The Planning and Zoning Commission public hearing is called to order. We will now receive comments from the public, both oral and written, regarding a replat of 503 Clearview Avenue to combine lot 11 of Empire Chateau and the adjacent one-acre lot tract into a single residential lot. Aubrey, is there a staff summary?
Yes, sir. This is, it is a replat. It's a residential property, so we did send out newspaper notices and notices to everybody within 200 feet of the property. They're combining two lots in order to rebuild and provide onsite detention.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak for making these changes? If there are, please step to the podium. Seeing none, is there anyone from the public that would like to speak against making these changes? Seeing none, we'll move to the next item. A zone classification change located at 2407 West Parkwood Avenue, Suite 108, to change from community shopping center to community shopping center with a specific use permit to allow NAICS use, number 8131, religious organizations. Aubrey?
Yes, sir. This applicant is requesting to lease about 1,425 square feet in an existing shopping center. It's for a community prayer center. There is ample parking in this parking lot to accommodate their parking. Other than that, there's no exterior changes to the building required. I think I included their floor plan in your backup material, just for an interior lease space build-out.
Great, thank you. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak for making these changes? If you could please step to the podium and state your name, please.
Good evening. My name is Donna Winfrey. Glad to see you all again. Do I need to give my address?
No.
Okay, good. I'm here on behalf of the tenant. They asked me to help them because they're right now at 2:15 West Parkwood, and how they got there, I don't know, but I wasn't involved in that. But that is not an appropriate location for them because it's an office building. This is a shopping center, and what they do is meet five times a day, and I got their schedule, and it's two or three people, five times a day, that come to pray. Before sunrise, right around noon, right around 2:00 PM, after sunset, and about 9:30. The biggest crowd is on Fridays at the, at 9:30 during the summer months and about 8:00 during the winter months. And they, that will be probably the largest gathering, and that'll be 20 people usually is what is happening at their current location and their location on FM 1959. They have the same setup, except that they own the building next to them, they're in a shopping center, and they actually have a school there, too, so very productive. Alternate times when the space is not used for prayer gathering, it'll be used for community service, office, help get kids, the children, get a job, college prep, resume writing, and things like that.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions?
Is there anyone else that would like to speak for making this change? Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak against making this change? Seeing no further comments, the public hearing is now adjourned. The Planning and Zoning Commission regular meeting is called to order. We will now receive any communication from the public or committee liaisons to the commission. To comply with provisions of the Open Meetings Act, the commission may not deliberate on subjects discussed under this agenda item. However, the commission may direct such subjects to be placed on a later regular commission agenda for discussion and/or possible action. Is there anyone from the public or committee liaisons that would like to speak at this time? If you could step up to the podium, please, and state your name.
I am Jennifer Whitley. I live in the Autumn Creek subdivision. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I have two points to make about the proposed church on the Whitcomb property. The plans submitted several years ago by the church for its original zoning change are not what in today's site plans in regards to drainage and building type. So I ask Planning and Zoning to enforce and optimize the detention for this Whitcomb property site. Autumn Creek residences need as much natural drainage as possible. The new plan straddles the detention area between the church parking lot and the commercial area. Doing it this way optimizes a concrete parking lot over any future commercial development that will come in with their own drainage issues. So I ask you, do not allow the church to cheap out on a detention area, that, for an area that floods historically. Secondly, the low-slung, monolithic barn dominium look works well on a country road, not Friendswood's second most important economic thoroughfare and gateway to our city. The original plans for a commercial and residential development with upscale finishes, pockets of nature, are gone. Instead, we're getting a metal building with some slapped-on facades and a huge parking lot. The architect said they took their inspiration from Friendswood's Quaker history. They must have driven right past the beautiful Friends Church on Main Street to the FFA barn. Lastly, if the church can afford to overbid a commercial developer by six figures for this Whitcomb site, they can afford to build something beautiful that won't flood the homes downstream from it.
Great, thank you very much. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to make a comment at this time? Okay, next is the consent agenda. These items are considered routine or ministerial in nature and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of items unless a commissioner or citizen so requests, in which case the item would be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the Planning and Zoning Commission July 25th, 2019, regular meeting? Make a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Shows to be unanimous. Next on our agenda are the action items. According to the Planning and Zoning Rules of Procedure R 2019-15, all action of the commission shall be made by an affirmative vote of four or more members of the commission present at such commission meetings. Our first action item is consideration and possible action regarding a site plan for Clear Creek Community Church to be located at 3801 FM 528. I'm going to, unless a commissioner would like to make a different motion or make a motion to remove it from the table, I'm requesting that this item remain on the table. Any other? So we're going to leave this item tabled until the next meeting. Next item is consideration and possible action regarding a replat of 503 Clearview Avenue to combine lot 11 of Empire Chateau subdivision and the adjacent one-acre tract into a single residential lot. Is there a motion? Motion to approve? Second. Aubrey?
I don't have anything else to add. We didn't have any public comments, and we're good.
Just checking. So moving into discussion, Rich, starting with you.
Yeah, I just see this as a technical issue associated with rebuilding their house, and they happen to have a lot next door. They have to combine them. It's more of an administrative thing, so I intend to vote for this.
Brett?
No comment.
Lisa?
No comment.
Mark?
I'm good, thank you.
I had no questions either. We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Shows to be unanimous. Next is consideration and possible action regarding a recommendation to City Council for the requested zone classification change located at 2407 West Parkwood Avenue, Suite 108, to change from community shopping center to community shopping center, specific use permit to allow NAICS use, 8131, religious organizations. Is there a motion?
Motion. Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Anything additional, Aubrey?
I did have one. The ordinance will be written to limit the use to the 1,425 square feet. If in the future they expand, they'll have to come back and request to amend the SUP.
Is the applicant or anyone representing the applicant, any other comments on this Any discussion? We'll start with Lisa.
So the one comment that I had on that is, so this is a fairly small place for a religious gathering. Is there, is it posted for a limit on how many people can be inside at one time?
Speaking to the mic, if you would.
Is that a common? Do I need to repeat it?
The fire marshal would determine the occupant load. They would have to be posted in the building.
Did you want to reply to that?
If you could step to the podium, please.
So the maximum that people that they'll have at any one time is 20. So I would imagine that a 1,400-square-foot space could hold 20 people. There's a donut shop on one side, and I think, I think it's a, and I need to, don't quote me on this, but I think it's a karate school next door, and so they each have, you know, that certain number of people as well.
Okay, Ms. Winfrey, if you could just say there, it might be easier, just in case. Lisa, anything else?
No.
Mark?
So I have two points of clarification. So considering that it's religious in nature, does this allow them to remove it from tax rolls?
No, they'll be leasing the property. They don't own it.
Okay, so that's where it comes in, so.
They're gonna, I'm sorry.
Yeah, please. Go ahead.
They'll pay their pro rata portion of the taxes. For example, if they're one-fifth of the center, they'll pay that amount of taxes, the property taxes for the center.
Okay, but this, so we've looked to proximity, right? So I'm still learning some of these rules because it's a religious organization. I know there are restaurants, and there's a bar in that, shopping centers, so we've met all of those distances, but my concern is, would this preclude any other businesses of that nature from moving into another vacancy close by this location? Are we encroaching on other commercial viability of empty spaces within that shopping center?
That may be, because alcohol service is usually property line to property line from churches, but if the alcohol services are already there, then basically they're, they're allowed to remain.
Good.
I mean, and we would renew their certificates when they come up for renewal. New ones, I don't know. I'd have to look into.
Okay.
TABC rules.
That's my concern, is putting a religious organization there, I understand, that's fine, it's the potential commercial impact to anything that's vacant there. That's mostly, I think they have quite a bit of tenants in that location. I don't think there's a lot of empty spots.
They do, and Aubrey is right. If the tenant that's serving alcohol is already there, then the church can move there, is my understanding. They can't come in after, or just like a daycare center couldn't either, so that's my understanding. And the vacancy, this is Suite 108, there's a empty Suite 110 next to it, it's about 3,000 square feet, and then at the very end, there's about 4,000 square feet, and some guys are looking at it, some tenants, for a CrossFit gym, and they're going to take up that whole space.
Okay.
Is what the intention is right now.
Okay, yeah, that's really the only two comments I have. I worry about the potential commercial impact.
Well, if I could, let me follow up on that, because it's a great question. Just because it's zoned, 8131 religious organizations, does that trigger, in and of itself, trigger the restrictions on what can be around it or close by? I'm just, I'm trying to draw a distinction between, because what they're really saying is it's a prayer center, a community center, does that get the same designation? I don't know the rules well enough on that specific item. You happen to know? Just, I hate to put you on the spot.
No, it's okay. So, I mean, we did look at other options for their uses because, like she said, they are in another location right now where they are not permitted. So we did look at other options, but this is the best fit for them, because, I mean, it's not traditional church services, but it's still a religious, you know, organization. It's people gathering. No, it's good.
I would assume that the owner of the building who's leasing it understood what the impact would be or could be in leasing the property for religious purposes, so.
Yes, so we talked about it at length with them because there are so few places that an organization like this can lease, and so we've looked high and low, and I hope, I dotted all my i's and crossed all my t's. I know I called Becky and Aubrey enough to make sure that we're in compliance. And it's not like, half of my family is from Georgia, and they're all Baptist, and half is from New York, and they're all Catholic. It's not that kind of noise, you know, the singing, the dancing, the tambourine, the drums, the music, and it's not, it's not that. It's really quiet prayer, and it lasts 10 or 15 minutes.
So what was it about their, you said that they're currently in an office location, but it's not working out? Did they provide any detail on what's not?
I wasn't involved in that, but I just know that, I saw the lease, it was a very kind of skimpy lease, and the landlord wanted a tenant, and he leased to them from April 2018 to June of this year. And so their lease has been up, they got an extension through August 31st. And it's an office building, and I would not have suggested that location for them then, and so I don't know what happened.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, when I, when I look at the documentation given to us, conditions for approval, it clearly indicates that the proposed use is in accordance with the comprehensive plan, which I'm skeptical of, so that's my view.
Rich?
So, yeah, my research on this kind of indicates this is probably a better fit than where you are now. I understand there wasn't enough parking where you are now, and it just, and it never met, if I understand right, Aubrey, the real codes, and probably with enough scrutiny, we would have stopped it before it happened. So it kind of snuck by us a little bit, but this one looks like a better fit in terms of, a couple of clarifications. I thought I heard you say, are you closing down two other places and combining into this one, or are you just closing down the one on 528 near the Taco Bell there?
They're just closing that one.
Okay.
Relocating that one.
Okay.
They're going to keep where they are on FM 1959.
Yeah.
They have a school, and.
Okay, so that's staying.
That's staying.
That's just, yeah, okay, this is kind of a satellite to that. And I confirm what you said, I've spent a lot of time in Indonesia and some countries that do this, and people just slip off and do a 10-minute prayer, and they come back, and it's, it's not noisy by any stretch.
It's not my grandma's church at all.
So it does look like a better fit to me. I think this is probably right. I do like you bringing up, Mark, the idea of the unintended consequences of, does this prohibit other places that might want to move in there? But I'm going to trust the landlord is aware of that and is understood the economic impact on that. And what I think I heard, just to confirm it one more time, so it's crystal clear, this does not affect the Mexican place or anybody else that's already grandfathered in there, and they can renew when their permit comes up, even if this is already in there. And that would be my number-one concern. So, yeah, I'm fine with this.
And if I could just add, a lot of shopping centers will have a clause in there where you can be the only one, you can have an exclusivity clause, where you can be the only one serving alcohol. So it's very highly unlikely that they'll bring another restaurant in that serves alcohol or liquor store, anything like that, because they want that restaurant that's there, they want the exclusive rights to all the alcoholic beverage sales.
Yeah.
And I don't know that they're leasing.
Which may or may not be in effect, so it's, yeah, that's a side issue. The last thing I just wanted to get clarified, and this is really for future reference, the property taxes are paid by the landowner, not by the leasie. So the fact that the leasie is a religious organization is in, it doesn't matter, because you have a for-profit landowner that's trying to run his business. Do I understand that right?
Yes, sir.
So it doesn't matter who leases, it matters who owns.
Right.
Okay.
But can, I'm still confused there, and I'm sorry for speaking out of turn here, but if there, if there was a cash register in that place of business, that would be generating revenue for the city as well.
Understood.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not a commercial establishment, otherwise it would be, but in terms of property tax, sales tax we don't get.
Right.
Property tax we do.
We get some of it.
Yeah, we would get the same property taxes we would get otherwise, because the leaseholder holds that. And I think I've taken more than my time, so thank you.
Brett?
I share the same concerns that Commissioner Perry had, the impact it has have on any future restaurants, but like his commissioner says, that's really a developer's decision. I hope he's realized the risk he's taken on, that he can't lease to a restaurant next to you anymore that wants alcohol. Can you share how long your lease is? Do you know, or you'll be?
Yes, sir. So the original, the lease that's currently on the table is three years, with two options to renew three years.
Okay. Well, I guess the developer at that time, three or six years from now, he can make that decision again, so.
Or nine years.
Or nine.
Two options.
Yeah, that's right, two options for nine years.
One, all the other commissioners have asked the questions I had, but except one, I just, more curiosity, is there, is there a sign that goes on the front, or?
So we talked, we talked about that, and for such a small space and such a large shopping center, they're just going to put a sign on their door. They're not going to have a monument on the marquee, on the monument sign at the street, at the curb.
Okay, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
For answering our questions.
Yes, thanks.
Okay, we have a motion to approve and a second. All in favor? All opposed? Shows that it carries. Our next item is consideration and possible action regarding future Planning and Zoning Commission dates. Aubrey?
Yes, sir. Our next regular meeting is Thursday, August 22nd, and the meeting after that would be Thursday, September 12th.
Next on our agenda are communications. Do any commissioners have anything they wish to communicate, suggestions for future agenda items, general comments, any updates from liaison assignments? Mark, I'll start with you.
Nothing to report.
Lisa?
Nothing to report.
Rich?
Are you going to talk about the APA conference, Aubrey?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so I have nothing.
Brett?
Nothing for me.
And I have nothing at this time as well. So moving to our city council liaison. Ms. Hanks?
Oh, absolutely. So we had a city council meeting last Monday night, and the council gave their direction to our city manager to go ahead and prepare documents for an upcoming bond election, and let the citizens of Friendswood decide if they want to have a bond election. We gave tentative approval to six propositions. Nothing will be finalized until this coming Monday. We're having a special meeting Monday night where a formal vote will be taken, and some of the language will be clarified and decided on that night. But there are six propositions, and one of them being, one of them being the community center, which is the, currently the seniors occupy the activity center, and so we're looking at making that, that, all of these recommendations came from a citizen advisory committee, I should have said that first. So they've recommended that we expand that because they are experiencing overcrowding, and also to make it a shelter for the, for the community. So that's one of the propositions. Public safety, so addition to the public safety building where the police are, and some additional facilities for our fire department is another proposition. The third one, or I don't know which order they'll be in, but the third one I'm speaking about is transportation, and so it may include some turning lanes, some enhanced traffic enhancements along the road, as well as sidewalks, and maybe some, some additional money that could be sold through bond money if we had a partner to go and open Friendswood Parkway from 528 to 2351. So some seed money, maybe some engineering, to do the engineering, or some mitigation that we might need to do in the land, something like that. Another one is the, I think the future, I think that one is also, transportation's one, and does it include Mary Kay, the, it's not separated, the Friendswood Lake Boulevard, right? It's included with transportation, and sidewalks are also in there. I happen to be a big proponent of sidewalks. I'm with you.
There you go, Trish.
And so another one, our parks primarily, to repair and do some upgrades at Stevenson Park, the pool here, and also Renwick Park. Is that about it for that? I think that's it. And then the last one is the drainage, and so the way that council has discussed this, as I understand it, but again, we will have further discussion Monday night, we took the recommendation from the Drainage Subcommittee, which made, which met weekly for eight months. We didn't take their number, but we took their recommendations, and their recommendation was to hire someone, which council already did, to dedicate that person to advocate for flooding, for money from the federal government, from the state, from the two counties, from the drainage district, whatever partners we can get to help us in solving the problems at Clear Creek, and to go after some money. And then I'm going to call it, like, I'm going to compare it to a line of credit, although there are council members that hate that term, but it makes sense to me. So it's not that we are taking on the project of whatever needs to be done, and there are lots of things that need to be done, to the creek to alleviate flooding, because we're talking possibly a couple hundred millions of dollars, okay? But we would be looking at money so that if we had a partner like the federal government, the Corps of Engineers, and they said, we will do this project, and you need to come up with 10% of it, then we would have access to the 10% by selling bonds. So we still have to, we had a lot of discussion about that number. Last Monday, the number was 41 million. I think that's what we're going with, but again, nothing is in concrete until this coming Monday, and that will be a separate proposition. So any questions on that? We have a lot going on, so stay tuned on Monday.
You've got a lot to do. Thank you for that update. Thank you very much. Moving to staff comments. Aubrey?
Yes, sir. So the July 2019 DRC report was included in your backup material. I think we had a few meetings finally. Then the APA Texas Conference is coming up, November 6th through the 8th. It's going to be in Waco. I sent out an email, I got a few responses, so the hotels are booking, I think they have five hotels for the conference, and four of them are already booked. It's Waco, so.
Yes.
So.
We know what's going on there.
If you're going to go, let me know as soon as possible, so we can get hotel rooms. And then I also put in the email that the National APA Conference, which is usually in places like San Francisco, Minneapolis, New Orleans, Boston, is going to be in Houston in 2020. So we have budgeted for all the commissioners to go, so hopefully everybody can take that opportunity and go to a National APA Conference. They're a lot different than our local conferences, so.
Well, if I could just add on to that, just briefly.
Sure.
Because I, I can't say enough good things about the APA conferences that I've been to. I find them very, very helpful in what we do up here. So if you have an opportunity to go to any of these, try to do so.
And they, the, so the link that I sent out, there's a short course for elected and appointed officials, so that would most likely be the track that you would want to follow. If you want to look at the schedule, you don't have to follow that, but like I said, those are usually geared towards elected and appointed officials, so good information. Also. Also, there is going to be an open house on Wednesday at the library from 4:00 to 7:00. It's a Q and A for the traffic study that's taking place right now. I just found out about this today, so I'm passing it on to you. If any of you'd like to go, I would especially encourage my Planning Subcommittee members to attend, because when they presented this at council, there was some good information in there that we might be able to use for, you know, our major thoroughfare plan and future land use plan. So hopefully good information with that.
When was that presented?
At the June 1st council meeting, I believe.
Go back.
Oh, July, July. It was put out on the Friendswood City Facebook page today, and there's a link to the council video when it was originally submitted.
Remind me of the time, you just said it, but I didn't.
Wednesday from 4:00 to 7:00 at the library, August 14th.
Next Wednesday.
Yes, August 14th.
Anything else, Aubrey?
Would we need a notice?
I was going to say, if a quorum is present, we need to post it that a quorum may be present.
Okay, yeah, we'll, if, we'll post a possible notice of quorum, just in case four, four or more of you are there, just to cover the bases. And then also, just to update you, on second readings approved by City Council, the 108 and 110 Zone Changes were approved this past Monday, and then the 17158 Black Hawk, the Calvary Chapel SUP was approved as well, so those are done.
Great, thank you. Anything else?
I think that's it.
Becky, anything?
No, sir.
Mary Kay, anything?
No.
Okay. Well, the Planning and Zoning Regular Meeting is now adjourned.